Good evening and welcome to the December 2023 meeting of the Penfield Library Board of Trustees. Thank you for joining us. This is a public meeting and is being broadcast on Penfield Public Broadcast and is also available on YouTube after the meeting. Do I have a motion to adopt today's agenda?
Second.
Second. Thank you. Sorry. The first item on the meeting today will be the going over last month's meeting minutes and the finance report. Does anyone have any comments on the minutes or is there a motion to approve them?
A motion to approve.
Naraj first, second. Thank you, Justin. Naraj, would you like to walk us through the finance report?
I'd love to. Thank you, Brett. So this month's financial report, I'd like to go right to the budget summary. That's through November. We are in December. I realize that that's 11 months other 12 months. So I'd like to look at the threshold is 92%. So that's the number that we're looking at. Revenues are fine. Drop down to the total expenses. Total expenses is coming in at 81% compared to 92%. So all in all, we're better by 10%. Wages is 6% better. Materials and contractuals are about 11%. So we're all, we're doing really well on the budget going into the last few weeks. If we go to the monthly balance sheet, we're still all right on that side. The gifted memorial fund, I did go to Family First and Canandega National. We have about $42,000 with Canandega. And we do have a CD. You told me to, the board instructed me to get a short-term CD, which I did. And then the rest of the money is in Money Builders, which is a savings and a checking account. So we're liquid. That's the main story of this. We're liquid right now. So if there's any expenditures, we're able to pay it. I think that's pretty much it. That's your finance report. Can we have a motion to accept what I just said?
Motion to accept.
Thanks. Second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Sorry.
Aye.
We'll go on to the next item here. Thank you, Naraj. Public participation. It doesn't appear that we have any participation today. We'll go on to our liaison report for the town. Linda, it's her last one.
Last one, yeah. So it's the end of the year. We've had our last legislative session. But there's an organizational meeting for next year. It's on January 3rd. We can have a swearing-in ceremony prior to the meeting in this room. So that'll be the next thing happening. I don't know. That's about it right now because most of the things have already taken place, like the tree lighting. That was, I hope you all enjoy that tree. It's gotten a lot of positive feedback, so we're pretty happy about it. You know, from my standpoint, I've been on this as a liaison for 20 years now on this library board. And, you know, I've sat through many interviews, all of you. And, you know, I've really enjoyed it and I, you know, hope you have a liaison that is as interested in the library as I am. I think you all do a wonderful job here as a library board of trustees and I think the world of the librarian and the staff. And, you know, it's been a joy to work with you all, so.
Same here.
Same here, Linda. Thank you so much.
Say that publicly. I'll be around. You'll see me about, so.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. With that, we'll go on to our next item on the agenda. We have the liaison reports for the Friends of the Library. Did Judy pass that message on to anyone?
There's not much to report for the Friends right now. They're at the end of the year and they're, they're just status quo.
Okay.
Looking a lot of books for the next book sale.
Perfect. Well, thank you so much, Rhonda. Naraj, anything with the foundation?
Yes, they do have one message. They want to remind everyone that they continue to build for the future funding for the library and they want to please ask the public to please consider the end-of-year gifts to support the library foundation. If you want instructions on how to contribute, you can go to their new website, Penfield Library Foundation dot org.
With that, we'll go on to the committee reports. Naraj, anything for the finance?
Nope.
No. Anna, with the personnel report. I know there's some things we have to go over tonight.
Yes, so we're going, I'm going to nominate Judy for a second term on the board. That does need a vote, so. Motion to nominate Judy for a second term on the Board of Trustees from January 2024 to December 2028.
Motion to approve that. Naraj, Jason, you second. All in favor? Thank you so much. With strategic planning, Jason, I think you're the only one on the members. Anything to report there?
Nothing.
Nothing? All right. Yeah, Justin, anything with the bylaws?
Our bylaws and politics are discussed in unfinished business, I believe, so.
All right. With that, Megan, anything to report with communications advocacy?
Nope, nothing.
No? Perfect. Rhonda, we'll give the floor to you for the director's report.
Great. So we're still working on the donation project that was inspired by our patron, Dave Thomas, who recently passed away. And the donation included two large newspaper stands, which we have received and we put in place. And we didn't get the four comfortable chairs yet, but we put four old chairs just in the area to see how it would look. And we already have people pretty much, many times, not just pretty much daily, many times every day, sitting there and they seem to already like it. So once we get the new chairs and the new tables, I think it's going to be fantastic. And I think we actually have a little bit of money left to get another newspaper. We're thinking maybe the Washington Post or something like that.
Fun.
So that's great. We did have a volunteer and staff appreciation holiday hour, so thank you to all of you who came. It was lovely. We are working on getting our paint and carpet choices ready. We pretty much have them set, so if anybody's interested in coming down to see what we are putting in in January, February, March of 2024, love to show you. We're really excited about everything. The Ruth Berman Room is set. We're waiting for the electricity in the kitchen, but other than that, everything is good. We're kind of stuck on the chairs. I spoke to Naraj and Judy about the chairs. Have a call into another vendor looking for a sturdier chair that is light enough for our staff to lift up and put in place. So that might take a while, but we have purchased the refrigerator, which came in damaged, so we have to buy a new one. We'll exchange it, no problem. But we got the microwave oven, the coffee dispenser, which we're already using. The refreshment card is here. We will have the ribbon cutting with Assembly Member Lunsford on Thursday at 11 o'clock if anybody would like to come. She was actually in the library today for a different meeting with MCLS personnel and she loves the room. It's just such a joy to have her there because she contributed so much to the project. It's just lovely. We're closing out our material budgets and we have set a budget for the Friends. They will donate $35,000 in 2024, which is amazing and we are very, very grateful. And this budget will go towards programming, the book page giveaway that we always have by the new books, some new toys, some outreach events, the fish tank VIP passes. And we will have one new electronic resource called Select Reads. If you have ever gone onto the Fairport Library website, they have it and we get comments about it. Basically, it's a service where the people can sign up to get recommendations on what to read that's directly tied to our catalog. So let's say you love historical fiction. You can sign up to hear about what historical fiction books the library is buying and you can click right on them, put a hold immediately. So it seems like it's a product that our patrons will like and we're excited to have it supported by the Friends. So that's pretty much it. Programming is going really, really well. We're always very busy, especially around the holidays. So many programs and people are coming in large numbers, so all good.
Always good to hear.
I went to the Eclipse program. I think that was between this, today and the last meeting. That was a pretty huge turnout, so really well done.
We're going to be collaborating with the town for our Eclipse programming, which is coming up next April and everything. As far as we know right now, the plan is to have everything take place at Harris Whalen Park, so the library will have a table and we will have our project or our, whatever we decide to do to contribute and the recreation department will contribute and hopefully we'll have great turnout. I think it's going to be a lot of fun.
Very nice. Any other additional comments on the director's report for anyone? No? Rhonda, thank you so much.
Sure.
And with that, I know we do want to take an executive session where we will adjourn to discuss a couple items just off camera here. So with that, do I have a motion to adjourn for the executive session? Do I need that? Justin, Jason, you second. All in favor? Perfect. We'll be back in a couple minutes.
Hello and thank you for joining us again. We are back from executive session. During that session, we did take a vote.
First go to your back in second.
To return.
To have a motion to a vote that we come back in this session. Jason first.
I'm not sure.
Megan seconds. All in favor? Perfect. With that being said, we did take a vote on a cost of living increase raise for our library director. We did approve during the executive session to have that go along with the rest of the town members. Do I have a motion to approve that officially? Right? Do I have a motion to approve that? Niraj first?
I'll do it.
Sorry, Anna seconds. All in favor? Perfect.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We'll go on to unfinished business. Niraj, I believe you were putting together a presentation on the recorded streamed live board event and wanted to report and then have a vote, correct?
Yes. So I guess the agenda item is recorded, streamed, live board meetings. So what I ended up doing was I wanted to take a step back and figure out what the purpose is of board meetings, what are the laws saying, and maybe what we should be doing. So I'd like to talk about that. To start, I'd like to talk about the purpose of library board meetings. The purpose of library board meetings is to conduct library business. It's an opportunity to get trustees together to talk about the plans, strategy, fiscal responsibility, and policies. There are governing laws that we should abide by. We consulted with the Pennfield Town Attorney, Peter Wishar, on the above-mentioned laws. The governing laws that apply here are the New York State Education Law, Section 260, and that applies to the trustees, and New York State Public Officers Law, Article 7. That's what's commonly known as New York State Open Meetings Law. New York State Education Law, Section 260, subsection number one, it says libraries are managed by the trustees. Subsection five, it says the Board of Trustees shall hold regular meetings. It must fix the date and the time of the meetings where meetings are open to the general public. If we look at Open Meetings Law, subsection 100, it says public business be performed in an open and public matter. Subsection 104, it says that it gives the notice requirement, public notice of the time and place of the meeting scheduled at least two weeks prior to the meeting. If we go on to the next page, our town attorney actually had some comments on the standard. He specifically noted that Open Meetings Law only requires that meetings should be held in an appropriate facility which can accommodate members of the public who wish to attend such meeting. Furthermore, he says he does not believe the Board of Trustees is required by Open Meetings Law to hold its meeting in the town hall auditorium, so it doesn't have to be here. He adds that Open Meeting Law has no provision that the law of the law to require meetings of the Library Board of Trustees to be broadcast or streamed by the Board. So there's no law that's requiring us to be here or to be recorded. I refer to the New York State Handbook of Library Trustees, a copy of which we just received today. In there, it says board meetings are not public hearings about library affairs.
Hello, and thank you for joining us again. We are back from executive session. During that session, we did take a vote.
First go to your back in second.
To return.
To have a motion to a vote that we come back in this session. Jason first. Megan seconds. All in favor? Perfect. With that being said, we did take a vote on a cost of living increase raise for our library director. We did approve during the executive session to have that go along with the rest of the town members. Do I have a motion to approve that officially? Right? Do I have a motion to approve that? Niraj first. Sorry, Anna seconds. All in favor? Perfect.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We'll go on to unfinished business. Niraj, I believe you were putting together a presentation on the recorded streamed live board events and wanted to report and then have a vote, correct?
Yes. So I guess the agenda item is recorded, streamed, live board meetings. So what I ended up doing was I wanted to take a step back and figure out what the purpose is of board meetings, what are the laws saying, and maybe what we should be doing. So I'd like to talk about that. To start, I'd like to talk about the purpose of library board meetings. The purpose of library board meetings is to conduct library business. It's an opportunity to get trustees together to talk about the plans, strategy, fiscal responsibility, and policies. There are governing laws that we should abide by. We consulted with the Penn Field Town Attorney, Peter Wishar, on the above-mentioned laws. The governing laws that apply here are the New York State Education Law, Section 260, and that applies to the trustees, and New York State Public Officers Law, Article 7. That's what's commonly known as New York State Open Meetings Law. New York State Education Law, Section 260, subsection number one, it says libraries are managed by the trustees. Subsection five, it says the Board of Trustees shall hold regular meetings. It must fix the date and the time of the meetings where meetings are open to the general public. If we look at Open Meetings Law, subsection 100, it says public business be performed in an open and public matter. Subsection 104, it says that it gives the notice requirement. Public notice of the time and place of the meeting scheduled at least two weeks prior to the meeting. If we go on to the next page, our town attorney actually had some comments on the standard. He specifically noted that Open Meetings Law only requires that meetings should be held in an appropriate facility which can accommodate members of the public who wish to attend such meeting. Furthermore, he says he does not believe the Board of Trustees is required by Open Meetings Law to hold its meeting in the Town Hall Auditorium, so it doesn't have to be here. He adds that Open Meeting Law has no provision that the law of the law to require meetings of the Library Board of Trustees to be broadcast or streamed by the Board. So there's no law that's requiring us to be here or to be recorded. I referred to the New York State Handbook of Library Trustees, a copy of which we just received today. In there, it says board meetings are not public hearings about library affairs. If we remember, our purpose was just to conduct business of the library. It's not it's not public hearings. The Open Meeting Law makes no provision for public participation. Our policies, however, have gone above that. Our policies have nevertheless set aside a period, just like today, a period for public participation as recommended by the handbook. It's not governed by the law, but it's just offered to the public. We give proper legal notice as suggested by the handbook of date, time, and location of the meeting. Transparency of our board meetings are supported by the minutes of the meetings. They're required, and they're made available to the public upon request. You should know that there are additional compliance for video conferencing. There's considerably more compliance measures written into law, subsection 103 of the Open Meetings Law, if the Library Board chooses to video conference their meetings. There's more statutory compliance measures. More statutory compliance measures gives rise to risk exposure to lawsuits to the town or our Board of Trustees should we fall short of those statutory laws. So we're putting ourselves under a higher standard. If we fall short, then you should realize that the town has given itself risk to exposure if they're not complying fully, and us as trustees. What are some of those additional compliance measures? Well, Open Meeting Law, Section 103, subsection A, subsection 2, talks about video conferencing by public bodies. Subsection G says the public body shall provide that each meeting conducted using video conferencing shall be recorded and such recordings posted or linked on the public website of the public body within five business days following the meeting, and it shall remain so available for a minimum of five years thereafter. Such recordings shall be transcribed upon request. So that's a further burden. So I wasn't sure where Penn Field rested on this, right? I didn't know. So I chose to poll the area. I started with Monroe County. This is a map of New York State, right? Monroe County is the red area. There's 20 MCLS libraries. There's 12 city branches. There's two villages. I happened to ask the executive director for the Owl system. The Owl system is the blue area. In here, there's one, two, three, four, five counties of New York State, which represents a large area, 42 libraries of the Owl system. So what did I find out? So let's see. We'll go through it individually. Brighton. Let's see who does not video record. Brighton doesn't. Brockport doesn't. Chillicothe doesn't. East Rochester doesn't. Fairport doesn't. Gates doesn't. Grease doesn't. Arundacoit, they livestream. They don't record. Hamlin does not. Henrietta does not. Mendon, Honeyway Falls, does not. Ogden does not. Parma, Hilton, does not. Pittsford does not. Riga, Churchville, does not. You see a trend? Rush does not. Scottsville does not. Webster does not. The City of Rochester does not. The 12 branches. So let's go to the Owl system. Ontario County, none of them do. Wayne County, none of them do. Wyoming County, none of them do. There is one small library in Livingston County that does. So of all those libraries, you got that one small library in the Owl system in Penn Field. So why are we talking about this? Prior to COVID, everybody was conducting their board meetings in person, not recorded. COVID happened, so we had Zoom meetings, right? So that was an opportunity for all these directors, for all these boards, to see the pros and cons. If they wanted to stay within that video conferences, if they wanted, if they saw enough benefit, they would have stayed there. All of them chose not to. So what were the takeaways, right? As I spoke to all these directors, and they had a lot to comment, right? Everybody was wondering, what's the result of your poll? I said, tune in. It's on video conference. So why the shift back to in-person? The most prominent reason was there was additional legal requirements for the video. There wasn't any directors willing to take that risk upon themselves or the town. So they said that, you know what? There's more compliance. We don't need that. Viewer metrics. There's some people that argue that there's viewer metrics, right? So there's people viewing the meeting. So now, how do we know that they actually viewed the whole hour and a half of the meeting? Or did they just choose, pick and choose something? Or was it just scrolling on the Facebook page and it tuned in? So I'd like to ask, are these passive views or are they active views, right? So if you were actively viewing these meetings, then potentially you would have had a question into the director or the board president. Have you got any questions from the public from any of the views?
Never.
Never?
No.
So I'll conclude that that's passive. So substantive information is in the minutes. And I'll tell you, because I was before Zoom and after Zoom, I'll tell you, there was a lot more interaction between the board when we're not on camera. And that's what a lot of the other libraries felt too. On-site meetings gives boards better access to the library and staff. When Rhonda was mentioning the carpet or the chairs, prior to being here in the Town Hall, we would have just stepped out there. We would have all went on a little field trip to the back room and actually viewed them, probably voted on it, got more work done, probably looked over the chairs, sat in the chairs, had more comments. What's the purpose of being on video? Are we, you're gonna, you're asking us for feedback, and then you're hoping that some of us go back into the library? But sometimes you're looking for synergy. Something that I think is important is we're looking for better rapport between the board, the director, and the staff. I think we should be looked at as one team, not like the board is above all and we're on camera. I really enjoyed when it was in the Bremen Room, when the board would go to the board meetings. Linda would have her community forum there. It was such an awesome day. Every, the staff would know that, oh, today's the board meeting. So everybody, it was way more interaction with staff, community. If the community wanted to come to the board meeting, they would. They never did, but it was right there. One thing that you need to also understand is let's not pretend this is free. It costs money, right? Are we, are we being true and fiscally responsible to the town? There's added staff right now, like making sure that this video is being conducted. That's not free. That's taxpayer expense. I do have one last thing. Judy wrote to me. She's not here right now, but she said, good morning, Niraj. Just a note to support the vote tonight to dissolve the monthly streamed trustees' board meetings. After attending an open meetings webinar, it's clear that we, as representatives of Penn Field Library, understand that we are not required to have streamed meetings. The community that can be built among board members, library staff, and residents is best served within the library. Looking forward to a meeting in the Bremen Room. So I, I support a vote in favor of no recordings. I think Penn Field Library is not practicing the generally accepted practice that's done by our surrounding libraries across five counties. Instead, Penn Field is actually the exception. Penn Field is the outlier. I wholeheartedly favor our future meetings not be recorded. I only want our library to be run better and more efficiently. The video recordings is just a hurdle to this end goal, that's in my opinion. And if the board votes in favor of not recording future meetings, then I don't want us to waste time. Then I propose that we start a fresh onsite, in-person, not-recorded meetings beginning January 2024. We have plenty of time for legal notice.
Niraj, thank you so much for sharing all that information and doing a lot of the research there. I'm going to leave it open for discussion here. Does anyone have any additional comments or questions for Niraj before we take a vote?
I just want to clarify. Video conferencing, I was under the impression that if, for example, Judy wasn't here and she called in to be a part of that, this meeting, that's not what we're doing.
No. So we.
So when you're brought up those other additional things, that doesn't apply to us because we don't do video conferencing.
We don't do that, and that's what was done before. So like, we never allowed people, Board of Trustees, to attend remotely for that reason.
So if a board member cannot attend a meeting, we can't just put them on speakerphone. They just, they're, like now, they're not there.
They're not there.
Okay. Jason, any thoughts? Justin?
No questions. I'm ready to move on.
Do you want to make a motion?
Can we have a motion to not record these things?
And to go in-person in the branch?
In-person, starting January 2024. Can we have a motion for that?
Jason, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Justin, seconds. All in favor? Thank you so much. So starting next month, the Board of Trustees here will meet in the Bremen Room. Yes. And we'll make sure there's plenty of public notice going out via, I believe, the website. We can even do it on social media there too. I think we can kind of pair the two.
Which we've already been doing.
Doing, yeah.
I do want to just take a second to thank the PCTV staff who have supported us all of these years and have worked really hard to make sure that we present ourselves in the best light with this proper recording, and they've done a great job. So thank you.
Thank you, guys. On with that, we'll go on to new business here. Library fines on adult materials discussion.
So we, we changed our fine policy back in April of 2022. If you remember, we eliminated fines for late items, children's items and teen items. I have two extra copies in color. Does anybody need a copy of this presentation in color? Because if it's just black and white, you might not see the highlighted.
I'll take one, Rhonda.
So before we even go into it, there are a few items here on that first page that are highlighted. Those are libraries that are going to go fine-free January 1st. And not all of them have announced it to their community, so I'd rather we just don't mention their names because the information was given to me in private. But since we changed our fine policy in April 2022, 1, 2, 3, 4, other libraries eliminated children's NYA fines. And 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 libraries, including our neighboring, some of our neighboring libraries, have eliminated fines on adult materials. This is clearly a national trend. It's not just in New York State, it's not just in Monroe County. This is a trend that is happening that we need to discuss. Under the chart that shows you who has gone fine-free, and you can see how many libraries at this point. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15 libraries are fine-free for children's NYA. So I'm really glad we made that decision back in April because we are, we are very much like our neighboring libraries. And it's, we don't ever want to be seen as being competitive. We're a public library. We're just serving our community. But at the same time, we don't want to lose our community members to other libraries who feel they have to go another five miles because they have a load of books that are late. You know, we want them to feel welcome. But, you know, in April, we talked about the idea of adult materials, so I want to go through that now. At the end of the chart, you can see which libraries seem to attract our Penn Field cardholders. So in Fairport, between January and November of this year, there were almost 22,000 checkouts of Penn Field Library cardholders going to Fairport to check out materials. Webster, there were 33,664 checkouts. Again, Penn Field Library cardholders going to Webster. And it is true that there are a lot of people who live in Penn Field that live actually closer to the Webster Library. So, you know, it's to be expected. But 8,000 went to Brighton and 6,000 went to Pittsford, and those are the four highest. It could be that they have a family member living there. It could be that they're coming back from a school over there. I mean, there are 1,000 reasons why somebody would go to another library, but we do need to pay attention to what the policies of those libraries are and make sure that they're going there for reasons that make sense and not just because they don't want to pay their fines. So discourse in favor of eliminating or reducing fines, we went over this back in April, but I just want to review it again. So the idea of eliminating or reducing fines is controversial still. We, you know, it's a discussion. And I'm presenting it today, but I would suggest that we think about it for a solid month and then vote in January because it is a big decision. And once you eliminate fines, it is extraordinarily hard to bring them back. So it's, we really need to think about it. But why would we eliminate fines for adults? Well, it's better customer service, better community goodwill, demonstrates our commitment to equity and inclusion, increases our circulation. We don't want our materials sitting on a shelf. We want them to go out. We want people to come and use our materials. It could potentially increase literacy rates, early reading experiences. Very often, adults check out on their adult card these children's materials. Well, that doesn't make sense, actually. Forget that. I don't know what I'm saying. Okay. Reduce conflict between library staff and patrons. Limit inefficient use of staff time. Very often, our clerks are calling people about their fines. Takes time. Sometimes it's a long discussion about fines, and people are waiting in line. We talked about competition. This is a growing trend. And then we have our mission state, our vision statement, and our statement of values that we want to adhere to, we want to demonstrate at all times. And I'm listing here on the next page our mission, our vision statement, our statement of values that we worked on at the very end of 2022 and approved, I think, at the beginning of 2023. We worked really hard on this, and it would be nice if we, we walk the talk, so to speak. So why wouldn't we eliminate fines? Well, obviously, we, we do need the revenue from fines. We, we need every dollar we can get for the library. So this is a small amount of money, but it is a part of our annual budget. There are many, many people, and I'm sure some of us here right today feel that, you know, patrons should be responsible for the materials that they check out, and they should feel responsible and accountable and return the items in a timely fashion, not keep them out for longer than the three weeks. If we eliminate fines, there's no doubt that our hold lists will grow longer, and our hold lists are predominantly on items that are best sellers. And we try to purchase when we can one item per five holds. That's, that's the equation that we use to know how many bestsellers to buy. If people are keeping these bestsellers out longer than three weeks, if they're keeping them out six weeks, if they're keeping them out nine weeks, those hold lists are going to grow longer, and that means more of our materials budgets are going to go towards these bestsellers. We really want to provide a broad reading experience for all of our community members, and this might limit our ability to do so. So, so there are good reasons to do it and some good reasons not to do it that we really need to think about. So what happens when a patron does not return the item on time? So after, most, almost all items are due in three weeks. Three days after the due date, patrons get an email or a text, depending on how they're signed up. If the item is not returned, they'll get a second notice when it's seven days overdue. If the night item is not returned, they'll get a third notice when the item is 20 days overdue. If that third notice is ignored and the item is 42 days, 42 days is a very long time. At that point, they'll be, they'll get a letter saying they're going to collections. And typically, at that point, you know, one of our staff members will call them up, explain what's going on, and ask them to return the items. Most items are returned at that point. But that's a very long time, 42 days, a very long time, plus the three weeks. So, yeah, it's, it's an issue. So, yeah, it's, it's an issue that we have to think about. The third page shows our revenue. Now, libraries are not really designed to collect revenue, and it's not a lot of money. But what the value of a fine is, is it, it kind of pushes our users to bring the item back. Once they know they're going to get a 35 cent fine, something clicks and they say, "I've got to get it back." If they're not, if they don't, if they're not getting that fine, will they bring it back? You know, I'm not really sure. So, like I said, it's a national trend. It is going on everywhere. Reports indicate that patrons and staff love fine-free policies. Many say that it builds relationships. Many say that the staff are happier. Many say that the patrons are happier. I have a link in here for you that I sent to you that if you want to see, and for those out there, www.urbanlibraries.org, you can see a map that shows you libraries across New York State that have gone fine-free, and it is growing. It is growing fast. So we should talk about this, and we should make a decision next month if possible. So if you're conflicted, if you're not quite sure where you stand, then I will tell you that my last library in Rockland County, and we talked about this again in April, what they did was they sort of compromised. They reduced all of their fines for adult materials to just 10 cents a day. So it went from 35 cents to 10 cents a day, a very nominal fee that shows equity and inclusion because it's a tiny, tiny amount. And, and I think all of you know that our staff is very customer service. If there is an issue, if there is a death, a divorce, a, a health issue, we will always cancel the fines regardless. It's not even a question. We want to take care of our people. These are just the fines where people just didn't have the time to bring the item back. So it's, if it was just 10 cents, would that make a difference? I, you know, I'm, we would be the only library in Monroe County to reduce the fine and not eliminate the fine. We might always be the only one to do this, but at least if we did this in stages and a year from now or even six months from now, we wanted to discuss it again, we wouldn't be bringing back a fine. We would just eliminate the 10 cents or the 15 cents or the 20 cents or whatever you decide to do tonight. But, yeah, this is, this is what is happening. I want to just make one thing clear because I think that, I didn't make it clear the last time we discussed this in April. All of our items, all of our Penfield items owned by the Penfield Library have a code. So our children's and teens' item have a code that says there's no fine. So if somebody, if, if somebody comes to the Penfield Library and checks out a children's book and returns it to Fairport or Brighton or Webster, they won't pay the fine there. Same way, if, like right now, which one has, still has a fine on? East Rochester still finding, still has fines on children's materials. If somebody, if we cancel, we don't have children's fines, but if somebody goes to East Rochester, puts a hold on an item and gets an East Rochester children's book and then returns it late, there will be a fine that they will pay here. So when you're looking at that revenue, it's not just what we have in place as our policy, but it's also, we're, we're affected by everybody else's policies, you know? It's the item itself that's coded. So...
Gotcha.
Our items fly all over Monroe County. Monroe County libraries come to us all the time. We would still have fine revenue if we eliminated all fines in Penfield from those libraries that still have fines. So it's, it's a little bit complicated. Do you have a question?
Rhonda, I have a few, if no one else has any right now.
Yes, great.
So since we've gone back to not having fines for the children's materials, what percentage of that material is just not being returned at all?
So we don't have, it's very, very low. It's extraordinarily low because we are so service-oriented. When things are not returned at all, we call people. We tell them, "They're going to go to collections. They have to return it." Eventually, it comes back.
Okay, so for the, so since we've gone, no fines for the children's, we haven't seen a loss in...
No.
...materials too much?
Not really, no.
Okay. If a patron has, you know, I'll just throw a number out there, like $50 for the fines built up today, we go fine-free, you know, starting February 1st or strong, or March, pick the date, right? What happens to that past due amount?
What we did last time was we, we, we wiped clean the slate for children's NYA because it would be so difficult for us to say to one person, "Yes, you own," one person, "You don't," you know? So we just wiped it clean. We lost a lot of revenue that day.
Gotcha.
But it is the way almost all the libraries are going. It's just, it's the right thing to do at that point. Right now, we're fine-free. Yes, or we weren't, so you have to pay them. Today, you don't. I don't, it's, yeah, it's just, you know.
Will we still ask them to return the material at that point?
What?
Will we, even though we eliminated their fine, their past, we'd still ask them to return the material?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Nothing is removed from their record, just that they want to pay fine when they return the items.
Okay.
Is it a possibility at all, and I don't know from a logistical library standpoint, but so, thinking about, so their card is not blocked until it's actually considered lost, which is 42 days past the original...
Their card is not blocked until they have $35. Today, it's $35.
Right, because it's...
So it could be a lost item that costs $35. It could be $35 in fines. It could be a combination of a couple of items that add up to $35.
Okay, so, because it says, when an item on a patron's account goes lost, the patron's card is blocked.
Right.
So regardless, so either they get to that 35 or that.
Right.
So what I'm wondering, if we're thinking about the concern with, like, hold times and people keeping things out longer, is it possible to block their card prior to that 42? Could it be like, once it's 20 days past, we couldn't do that?
No, it's a system.
Okay.
MTLS.
So if they check something out, they don't return it, after 42 days, their card, on the 43rd day, their card is blocked, then they can no longer check anything out within any library system?
Right. Within Monroe County.
Okay. So we do have some kind of mechanism to prevent people from going from library to library just to...
Right.
...check things out, even if there's no fines? Okay.
What percentage of revenue have we lost by getting rid of the young adult and children's materials?
So, I mean, we got rid of it in April, and we still, we had projected 25,000 for this year, and we still, right now, we're up to 22,000, and I did this at the very beginning of the month. I think we'll probably hit the 25,000.
Okay. I'm just wondering if it's a huge jump to go from 35 cents to nothing, and especially if we have some of these concerns about the bestsellers list and all of that, if it makes sense to go to, like, the 10 cents for a trial period, see how that goes, and then we can reevaluate and see if it makes sense to go fine-free or keep it as is. See if those numbers of people going to Webster and Fairport and all of those libraries continues to hold steady or changes.
My only question at that point would be, when we're talking 10 cents, is that such a small amount for people that if we're going to make the change to 10 cents, is it even worth it to do, okay, we're going to do 10 cents? Do we just go to fine-free and then we're in line with what other libraries are due with?
All I can tell you is my other library, when we went to 10 cents, it was extraordinarily popular. Our hold list did not change. People did return them on time, and very often, they would kind of smile and, and like, level up. They, you know, 50 cents, that's so funny, I'll just give you a dollar, kind of thing. It, it just became a very positive experience. But in that system, everyone went, pretty much everyone went to the 10 cents. So here, we would be the outlier. So I don't know what the difference might be.
Right, and I wonder, is it worth being the outlier for 10 cents? Is that really going to be a significant...
So we have, what, 1, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, who might just follow us?
I mean, it's also twofold. I mean, we're talking about the adult fines here, not the children's.
Just the adult. We're good with children, young, I don't think anybody wants to change that, do you?
No, I don't want to change the children, but I think at the end of the day, an adult is also responsible to feel, to, to bring a book back in time or there's circumstances. So be, you know, just because there's a trend of going fine-free, I don't think we have to follow the trend. Or if we did want to, you know, reduce the fee, I think that would also be, you know, possibly a good thing going to, like, the 10 cents, you know, kind of going in the phases. I'm just kind of throwing out ideas here for the board to think about.
So, so my thought, yeah, the monetary fine, the only people that really would stop, the majority of Penfield, like, the 35 cent fine, the 10 cents fine, that's not going to matter to me and most people in this room. But for people who can afford it, who might not have reliable transportation, who might fail to return the book on time due to extenuating circumstances, that, that monetary value is higher for them. That's a bigger deal for them. So it's going to prevent them from utilizing this resource more than, like, the punishment? Because it wouldn't, like, it, it would, like, fines to me, right now, don't even matter for the 35 cents. Because I, one, we can always extend our, our, our...
Renew materials.
We always renew it online. But for the people that this would help the most and who the library is for the most, the people on the lower end of the spectrum of, of income, the fine-free is a huge benefit, and maintaining any fine is not a deterrent to anyone except them.
So my, and I, I hear you. My, I just want to point out that the money that we're getting from fines, the $25,000, might seem a lot, but it's only 1% of the budget. So it's really immaterial, whether it's 10%, I mean, 10 cents or free. I just, I just, and I like that there was some recourse that, hey, if someone has it out for a long time, then there is accountability in that the card is potentially blocked. So instead, you can't just do it forever and everything. So I just wanted to point out from the finance end that $25,000 is immaterial.
Yeah, and I, I was thinking something similar to what Justin expressed, that people with unreliable transportation or genuine issues potentially getting to the library are the ones that the fines are going to be the most impactful on, so.
Okay. I think it definitely leads to, you know, giving us a good idea of what the discussion could be, should be. Maybe the, in the next meeting, we can take a vote on whether or not we want to go fine-free completely, so we have, you know, you know, this kind of precursor building up to it.
That would be great.
Anything else anyone want to comment on, or we feel good on that topic?
If you think of any questions in the interim, you know, just email all of us, maybe we can discuss along the way if you think of any questions, and I can be prepared for the next meeting with those answers.
Okay.
Perfect. With that, we'll go on to the next item here, which are the committee nominations. Now, I know, at the beginning of the year, we, we did take a vote to change that policy in which the committee members were selected in terms of the chairs. Any thoughts on what we wanted to do this year in terms of, you know, no one's really expressed that they want it to be out of their particular committees right now? Are we looking to just maintain what we currently have into the, the next year? I'm just looking for, for feedback here.
Personally, I, I like my committees. I like Deanna on the Bylaws Committee.
Okay. I, I enjoy my committee. This is my first time on the Bylaws, and I enjoy the education in that, and I enjoy doing the finance if possible.
Any additional thoughts?
I'm good. No change needed.
So I don't have any strong feelings, honestly.
So in the next meeting, we'll take a vote just to make sure that everyone's maintaining their current positions within, within the committees, and then will, will be no changes, you know, for 2024. Sorry, had to think about that. Perfect. With that, we'll go on to one of the, the last items here, which is the claims payment. I believe it was Justin. Thank you.
I make a motion to approve vouchers, a total of $39,560.71.
I have a motion for Megan first. Anyone second? Niraj second? All in favor? Perfect. Now, I know for January, Jason, I believe, correct? And then in February, Megan, I believe that is you.
Yep.
Do we have to have, Deanna, do we have to have one more claims adjuster? Would it fall underneath?
For Janu-, yeah.
For the early January meeting.
Because we have the January 2nd...
Yep.
...meeting, which would be Jason.
Okay.
And then we would need another, another audit, audit for January 16th, which would be Megan, and then February 20th. I have listed as Jennifer.
Perfect.
If everyone's okay with that.
I think that's fine. So you have a smaller bill there, Jason.
That's what I heard.
Sorry, Justin.
Perfect. So with that, we will, do we have a motion to adjourn this meeting? Here's our last one being...
Just one thing. If you don't think you'll be able to make the meeting on January 2nd, just let us know because we do need a quorum to approve those payments.
Okay.
All right, cool.
Do we need to have a vote for that special meeting or no?
Yes.
Who?
Uh, no, no, no. We, we...
We don't need a vote. No, we'll just, we'll just publicize it.
Oh, it's just bold, that's what I was asking.
And that one takes place at the library anyway. That's no change.
Perfect.
So what, what time is it on January 2nd?
6:30.
Right now, we have it at 6:30. Do you want to change that? Do you want to make it earlier?
It's only going to take like five or 10 minutes.
Right.
Yeah, I think 6:30 is good.
Good?
Okay, perfect. Do I have a motion to adjourn our final meeting here being broadcast? Niraj first, Jason second. All in favor? Perfect. With that, we'll adjourn the meeting.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.